Absent with notice, John Chartier.
Here.
Melissa Clark, here.
Marian Dwyer.
Here.
Lisa Cabaluna.
Here.
Kevin McCollum, absent with notice. Diane Salter.
Here.
Dr. Matt Outlaw.
Here.
Jan Meek.
Here.
Dr. Dave Schmidtow.
Yes.
It's a toe at the end. Schmidtow.
Hilly, interim tip.
You got it.
We got it.
I'm here.
Okay, and if we could all stand, please, for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first on the agenda, we have the Brandon High School student report. Zoe and Savannah.
I'm Zoe, and that's Savannah, and so this is our March update for the Brandon High School. So for student council stuff, we just recently had snow coming in February. The dance was the 23rd, I believe, so we had Spirit Week, we had the court performance, the dance, pep and power puff, which the theme was Mario Kart. And we actually had the championship power puff game at the pep assembly, which was new for us. We had a lot of new pep games this time, and it seemed to turn out better than it was before. And we also had a new DJ that included a photo booth instead of photographer that you pay for the pictures. So you got the little picture slips for free, and that's going to be a big hit, too. We also talked about this year for us to give out a scholarship, since it's within our budget. So it's called the Rising Star Scholarship, and we're going to give it out to one senior boy and one senior girl, whoever applies, it's going to be $250 to whoever wins or gets awarded the award. And so then we have the blood drive coming up on March 28th. So that's going to be during school hours, it's on Thursday. And then we also just attended the Regional Connect Conference in Frankenmuth. So when we went there, we listened to many different service project. What? We listened to many service project presentations from other schools, as well as our school presented on our service project, which was, we made the, it was 60 different bags filled with necessities that we gave to the Brandon Community Church to distribute to those in need. And so they voted there on different service projects to be presented at the state conference.
We have the state conference coming up, that is this weekend. That, we applied for a whole bunch of awards. We applied for the Principal of the Year Award, we nominated Mr. Wyatt. And then Student of the Year, Unsung Hero Award, Award of Excellence, Exceptional Service Project, and the Star School Award. And then we had a change in officer election, so just, instead of doing just a speech and then this class vote, we have a whole week, and they're going to do debates, and they're going to get asked questions from the council, and then do a speech, and then we'll vote at the end of the week. We also are in a new committee cycle, so, what is that? It's Spirit, which is the Spirit Trip, and then we have Star Awards, Senior Banquet. And we added a new one, and it's service, so they're going to do something and give back to the school, instead of the community this time, so it's going to be a school service project. We also did Election Committee, so the people that are coming into the council next year are, they have, I think they know now, so they picked those people. And we also have an upcoming Spring Break Spirit Week next week.
So as for other stuff that's been going on in the high school, there is NAEP testing, which was just mostly for like data collection to the, we got chosen to do it. Then we had, so then grades nine through 11 are going through the scheduling process. Right now, they're picking their classes for next year. And then tomorrow, AP testing registration ends, and those tests are the first two weeks of May, I believe. And then the spring sports also started last week, their tryouts were the 11th through the 13th, I believe. And then we also had, they found this out today, I think, or maybe earlier last, or later last week, that these three freshman stemmers that are pictured got, they made it to the National Bridge Competition. And that's all we have.
Well, thank you very much, we appreciate it. Okay, next on the agenda, we have the superintendent's report.
Okay, I'm going to begin with inviting Chris Dynas up to give us our winter season athletic report, a little preview of our spring season. Again, this is something we had talked about doing at the end of each season. Having Chris come in, talk about some of the highlights from the previous season, and how the start is going for the current season. So he'll be back in June to give us the spring report, to maybe talk about some of the camps and things like that. Chris, take it away.
Thanks, Dr. Outlaw, good evening, everyone. Happy almost spring, since it's right around the corner here. But as he said, just a quick recap of the winter seasons. Boys and girls basketball teams ended their seasons, not last week, but the week before, in the district tournaments. Both of our teams, boys and girls, saw tremendous growth and improvement from start to finish. Wrestling team, while their overall record was not where coach wanted it to be, definitely had a good year. They won their fifth district title in the last six years by beating up on Notre Dame Prep to go on to the regionals. We had two individual wrestlers, Senior Mike Niesai and Junior Brendan McCluskey, that qualified for the individual state finals, so they had very good individual seasons. Competitive cheer has improved the last couple of years with their participation numbers, and they had a good season in the Flint Metro League compared to the last couple. They've improved and finished sixth in the league, and their numbers are looking really good. We are hoping to bring back junior varsity cheer next year and have two teams. So that program is starting to build back up. Boy swim season, we had a girl, sophomore Megan Shea, participated on the boys swim and dive team all year. And Megan qualified for the dive state finals in Division III as a sophomore, so she got to experience the state finals. And then in bowling, Senior Jacob Turner, he qualified for the individual state bowling finals and placed 24th in Division II in the entire state, which earned him second-team All-State honors this year. So he had a very good bowling season. Academically, we had 25 winner athletes who received the Flint Metro League Scholar Athlete Award. And of those 25, six of them also received all-league recognition, voted on by the coaches throughout the league. Like Zoe said, spring sports started last week, so we're already rolling with spring sports. There are games that are scheduled at the end of this week, weather permitting, and fingers crossed that our fields are ready to be played on. We are going to kick the spring sports season off, though, on Thursday night with Meet the Blackhawks Night. This is an event that we started in the fall. Prior to each season, we bring all the coaches and players in, and we introduce them to the community. So we encourage everybody to come to the gym on Thursday night, 7 o'clock. We'll introduce our spring teams. Each coach will have about 30 seconds to talk about their upcoming season, what they expect when their first home game is. And then, like I said, Thursday and Friday, we actually have games scheduled for some of our teams that they'll kick off the season. Some big events that are coming up this spring, we are hosting a very large track meet on Friday, April 12th. We have 16 schools from Oakland County, Lapeer County, Genesee County, and I believe we even have one from Ann Arbor coming to our track meet. We're expecting a very big turnout, so if you're available and around on Friday, the 12th, we could either use you as a help or just come and watch and cheer on our kids. And then the last big event going on this spring that we started two years ago is our Spring Battle of M-15 with Goodrich. This year, it's Goodrich's turn to host, but all of our spring sports team will play on Saturday, April 27th. We'll start at 9:00 in the morning, and we stagger all the start times. Every team will get a chance to play, but we stagger them so that the peers can go watch their peers play and cheer for each other. So again, that's at Goodrich this year, and next year, we will have the opportunity to host again like we did last year. And then finally, something that I was looking at, an updating to date, we have had seven senior athletes sign with colleges or universities to go on and play at the next level. So I'd like to recognize them real quick. Megan Mailey signed with Finlandia University to play soccer. Janelle Quazaborski signed with Madonna University to play volleyball. Guy Beasley signed with Bradley University to play soccer. Matthew Hill has signed with Alma College to play football. Matthew Harrison has signed his letter with the University of Michigan as a preferred walk-on to play football at U of M. Aaron Shelton signed with Ohio Northern University to play soccer. And then Matthew Beasley signed with Illinois Technical University to play soccer. So we've got quite a few seniors that have already committed to play at the next level. That's it in a nutshell, looking forward to hopefully a dry spring and not too many makeups this year.
Warmer weather.
Yes, warmer weather, dry weather. I don't care if it's warm, dry weather. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, Chris.
If I could have Ms. Sedan and Mr. Stevens join me at the podium here, we're going to honor some of our. Ms. Sedan is filling in for us today. Our normal person to organize this, Maria Shubrin, there was a death in the family, so thank you, Diane, for filling in. So this is, this is an exciting night here. We have some of the best teachers. I've been in this profession now for a couple decades, and here in Brandon, we have some of the best teachers that I've ever worked with, some of the most dedicated, most student-centered people that I've ever worked with. And tonight, we're going to have a chance to just talk about some of the awards that some of our unbelievable teachers have received. I'm going to start off talking about the Brandon Teacher of the Year. Every year is part of Oakland County's Teacher of the Year Program. School districts across the county look and they nominate people to be part of a countywide Teacher of the Year competition. And this year, we had two absolutely remarkable people that were chosen. I'll talk about the first, I'll let Mr. Stevens talk about the second. First is Sarah Spencer. Sarah, would you mind coming up with me, real quick? Sarah is a teacher, she's a 6th grade teacher at Brandon Middle School. She's been a remarkable teacher for quite a few years. But this year, she has taken leadership of the Project Lead the Way program at the middle school. As we know, the district launched that program this year. And I think that sometimes we can underappreciate how much work goes into launching a program like this. But I don't think I've seen her one time this year, but she has a nice smile on her face. She loves working with kids, kids are energetic every single day, they are so excited about Project Lead the Way. And then she's fantastic at all the other things that she teaches as well. And she's enormously popular with students, with staff, I think she's well-respected by parents. Very, very well-deserved honor being Brandon Teacher of the Year this year. Congratulations. It's my honor to introduce Matt Prevost, if you'd come up, Matt. Matt is a high school social studies teacher at, obviously, the high school. We nominated, he got this award for many reasons, and I can go on and on and on about Matt. In his career, Matt, how many years have you been teaching for the district?
I think 13.
13 years for the district. To that time, he's done many things, both in the classroom and outside of the classroom, including coaching football and track, and maybe some other sports that I don't.
Basketball and Quiz Bowl.
Basketball, Quiz Bowl, just an unbelievable, outside of the classroom, we all know how important that is for our kids. But in the classroom, if you ask any teacher that's ever taught an advanced placement class, that's a huge deal, that's a huge undertaking, a lot of work goes into teaching an advanced placement class. Mr. Prevost teaches three advanced placement classes, and in my time here in six years, his scores have been the best in the district all six years. So, you know, academics are very high. When Mr. Prevost talks in a staff meeting, people stop to listen. They might not do that for me, but they do do that for Mr. Prevost. You know, when he has something to say, people really do listen. Even though he's a social studies teacher, he really talks about implementing reading and writing across the curriculum. He works with his fellow staff members, even to train them and give them advice on how to do that, especially towards the AP style. So it's my honor to have Matt Prevost as our secondary Teacher of the Year for Brandon. Next up, could I, Ms. Colbert, come on up here? So I had the honor of talking about Rebecca Colbert. Rebecca is a, she is a 6th grade teacher as well, and not unlike Ms. Spencer, she's part of a really remarkable team, the 6th grade team is a fabulous team across the district. Rebecca has, does so many things for the district. She teaches language arts and is kind of the team leader in that area. She also has been a major player for us at our Accelerated Learning Initiative as a district, and has launched 6th grade honors, and does so many things. She's also, she's a teacher, extremely popular with her students, students love being in her class, she loves being in her class. I think about, when I think about Rebecca, a lot of things I think about are like the little things. Little things like at the first day, she has these videos that she does where kids get a chance to know who she is. They're like, she has all kinds of things, "Well, this is where I lived, and this is where my family came," and just eases the tension with kids and gets them to know their, she just does all those little things to make the experience for the students so special. She was nominated, and she won the VFW Poles 582 District Five Teacher of the Year Award this year. Incredibly well-deserved honor, and we want to thank you for everything that you do for us.
Laura Frye, I have the honor of presenting. So Laura is one of our special education teachers. She right now is teaching our Adult Transition Program at the high school. And she won the DEV Award, which is an award for teachers and lots of things, but she was the Teacher of the Year this year, and is presented by the ARC of Oakland County. And the presentation is actually this Friday, but we wanted to make sure everyone knew about this. There was over, I think they said over 300 applicants, and there's several awards they give out, but she won the award, and well-deserved, because if you have had any of her cookies, you know, her students make the best chocolate chip cookies in the world. But she's just been in the Adult Transition Program for the last four years. Before that, she was a middle school teacher, and she's been in our district a long time, and she has a wealth of knowledge, and she shares that with both her students and her families. She also does tons of things after school. So what are you doing tonight, Laura? "Oh, we're going to have the kids over for a bonfire." "At your house?" "Yes, at your house." "Okay." "What are you doing next weekend?" "Oh, well, I'm taking the kids, and we're going to the movies." I'm like, "What time?" "Oh, you know, 7 o'clock show." Okay, so she makes sure that not only are the students learning career readiness and job skills, but that they're learning how to be appropriately social in the community, and getting time for them to get together socially also. So there's a lot above and beyond all the time, so I'm very proud to be a part of knowing Laura as this.
So next, I'm going to invite Dan Stevens up here. And Dan is going to talk about, we have three students that were honored as Best of the Best Flint Metro League, and he's going to talk about those students in this award.
Before I do that, I just really quick, want to, some things that came to my attention, some other awards and honors for our school and some things that went on. Just over the weekend, I believe, or last week, our choir participated in choir competition. They had two Division Ones, which is the absolute highest you can get in a one Division Two. So I know they're not here tonight, but I just wanted to recognize them for their amazing job that they did. Also, our student representatives mentioned our girls that went to the, are going to the bridge competition. Only six teams are invited in this region. When I say a region, it's the whole Midwest area. This is the third year in a row we've had a team invited to Nationals for the bridge competition. Actually, I think it was two years ago, we actually won it. Wanted to throw those girls' names, they're all freshmen, amazing job. Paige Thwing, Maddie Meisner, and Riley Sobeki. So awesome that they're, that they're even invited to something like that. And lastly, oh, yeah. And lastly, our Business Professionals of America were out last week at their competition. And they had many people actually, many people actually qualified for Nationals and BPA. So just real quick, once again, they're not here, but I want to make sure that they're recognized. Brooke Killick did qualify for Nationals in extra-peraneous speech. Banking and Finance, Adam Cox, he also qualified for Nationals. In banking and finance, Kylie Claxton, in presentation management as an individual, is an alternate for Nationals. Other people that placed, Adam Cox, Guy Beasley, Dylan Bone, and Cooper Hickman. So give them a round of applause, too. Amazing lead at the high school. Lastly, these three are invited with us here tonight. Every year, the Flint Metro League, which there's nine schools, come on up, guys. The Flint Metro League recognizes the top academic achievers in every school. And they are, they are put on plaques and forever enshrined as the Flint Metro League All-Academic Team. And we have three of them here right at Brandon High School, so I want to recognize these. This award is given to, given to students who have a combination of grade point average and either SAT or ACT score. All of these guys took both of those and scored very well in both of those tests. First, I want to, I want to talk about Elijah, Elijah Buell, right here in the bill. Elijah had a 1480 on his SAT, a 35 on his ACT, that's one point less than perfect. With a GPA of 4.24, Elijah is the drum major in the marching band, not the drum major. Am I saying that wrong?
Yeah, no, it's right.
I am saying that right. He does powerlifting, tennis, shot put, and he plans on going to the University of Michigan to study either computer science or industrial operations. So give it up for Elijah. Next up, Cooper Hickman. Cooper had a 1420 SAT and a 34 on his ACT with a 4.33 GPA. Cooper is going to be valedictorian this year of his class, is the president of the National Honor Society, is the historian for the Business Professionals of America, captain of the football team, as well as the Quiz Bowl team. He also plans on attending the University of Michigan to study either aerospace engineering or computer science. And then last, definitely not least, Noah Cox. Noah had a 1510 on his SAT, a 33 on his ACT, and has a GPA of 4.28. He's the executive vice president for BPA, not just our local BPA, but the whole state of Michigan. Is on the Business Professionals of America and district committees, such as the Alumni Committee and Accelerated Learning Committee, which many of you were on as well. He currently volunteers at the Old Mill Historical Museum, since you were 11 and 1/2 years old, is that right? And he plans on attending the Ross School of Business to study business and wants to pursue consulting work. So let's give it up for Noah.
And then one more topic here. We have, we've taken, undertaken an endeavor, we've been trying to do this for the last couple of years, because we've been looking for the right person to lead a program, an area in our school district that we've been trying to relaunch for the last several years. Extremely excited to have a very energetic and a real visionary when it comes to the career technical education area. Eric, can you come on up here? I'm going to let you introduce Eric Swatson. Eric Swatson, we have hired to be our new woodworking teacher for the district. And he's going to be teaching at the high school, he's going to be teaching at the middle school, and relaunching a program. I know there's a ton of student interest already in this. Canoe building, tiny house building, furniture building, not just, you know, traditional, but taking it, putting it with some really creative, exciting things. And I just think the sky's the limit for this program, and Eric's going to be leading the way. So Eric Swatson.
I was sitting next to Rebecca over there, and I said, I said, "This felt really formal." I don't know if I've ever been to the board meeting, but it actually is really nice. I don't really know Brandon Community that well. My godfather lives down the road, his boys all went to school through the district, preschool through 12th grade, the Ailer Boys, if anybody knows Greg Allen, his sons. That's my dad's best friend from childhood. And I'm just really excited to be here, like Dr. O said. There's so many things we get to do, and I just like look around the room at like your desks and furniture, I was like, "Okay, we'll make new ones of those." Not that they're not nice, I mean, just, I just feel like, in this day and age with kids, there's so many things you can do to be creative. So, yeah, we're going to start with tiny houses, and with canoes, and kayaks, and paddleboards, and furniture, and all those things, but who knows where it goes from here? And I really like working with kids, but I like learning, so, yeah, I can do traditional woodworking, but it's really fun to be able to create and make the things that you see in your head and you think. You just need help to actually know how to do it. You know what you want to do. And so I hope to capture that with the kids, and really help serve the community so that when they leave and graduate from high school, not only do they have options to like go to college and community college and schools, but they have options to get a job because of what they learned here. So if I can be a small part of that, that's what I'm really excited about. And I think I start April 8th to get this thing going, and I'm really looking forward to it.
I need to say, we're so excited. Can you guys come back next month, we're going to redo this whole thing all over again. Just all these accolades, put a hand in. Okay, next, we have public comments and questions on Agenda Business. Did anybody sign in?
No.
Okay. Okay, could I get an approval of the consent agreement? Motion, please?
Move that the Brandon Board of Education approves the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say yes. Yes, opposed, say no. Motion passes. Okay, next, information and discussion items.
Wait, who's second, sorry, who's second? I didn't, thank you. You're welcome. Oops, sorry, I had that. Analysis.
Thank you, Diane.
Thank you, Diane.
I was like, "I'll do it."
I heard the voice, but I.
Okay. Next, Board of Education Committee reports.
Committee reports, first, Diane, did you hear?
Yep, yep, I have, I'm sorry, I have a committee report, sorry. Marian and I attended March 2nd, we went to the Budget and Finance Training that was put on by the State of Michigan Office of School Review and Fiscal Accountability. And I have to say, this, I didn't know, it was the first time they've ever put it on. It was an all-day event, it really was very interesting. We attended the following sessions, Strategic Planning, and basically it did talk about an overview of bond issues, how to improve infrastructures, informed us on what the permissible uses were of the proceeds, what the protocols are necessary, that Jan's got to adhere to, suggested formats on how to accomplish revenue for school building improvements. So that was, I mean, eye-opening to understand all the little nuances. It's not just like we get handed money, there's all these strings attached. Then we did budgeting with your board. Basically, budgeting is only as good as its assumptions. And that's why I think we've been able to have successful budgets every year, because we have people that really make the good assumptions that are applicable to here. The other thing that they did say is that they do come out and they do train boards on basic finances. And I'm thinking about maybe next year, we would have something like that, so we get an idea more from the state's point of view, what is important with budgets. Then also, we attended the Balancing Financial Limitations with Academic Need. Basically, these instructors said, "Get creative," but we did learn that all schools are struggling. One of the board members from Troy basically said, I mean, he sort of called out the instructors a little bit, but they have every seat filled in their district, and they need infrastructures and buildings fixed up and repaired. And they said they can't get any more kids into their schools. So it was interesting to see that the same struggles, obviously, that we're having, even filling every seat doesn't mean we solve all our problems. So just, that was probably the most interesting. And then we went to what to ask your auditor. Basically, there were some questions we've seen before, but that we need to get, make sure the opinion from the auditor on our district financial statement, and then maybe what other districts are doing differently that we could maybe look at implementing. Then last but not least, the review of the school aid fund revenues, the budget appropriations and the history. Very eye-opening about where, the one in particular is, we get 7% of the school aid fund is from lottery. Well, 7% of the school aid fund goes towards higher education, colleges, so it's basically a wash. I mean, that's something minor that we learned, but. I mean, that's something minor that we learned, but it was just sort of eye-opening to see the pie and maybe a little more specific of what's involved. But I have to say, the biggest thing I think we learned, they have a little chart that they gave of our district and some comparables, we're right in line with what everybody else is doing. And our finance reports, how we show current budget, an overview of past budgets, and the futuristic view of budgets to come, is what we're supposed to have been doing and what we are doing. And that our struggles are mirroring other school districts on how to do more with less money. And I really, we gained a lot of appreciation for Jan and Matt and the business office on what they do to keep track of everything involved. So that was that. I also then attended the Oakland County Schools Legislative Priorities and Updates. And basically, Oakland County has got four areas that they find important for Oakland County. And one is to protect school aid funding, and I'm not going to go over all the stuff involved in that. The other is having evidence-based decision-making. Our third is accountability and transparency. And fourth and last is they want to be able to keep local control to school boards in the school districts. They did go over some of the budget and some of the highlights. They liked lots of things. They don't know how accomplishable it's going to be, but it should be very interesting to see what the final tally is going to be once they get through our legislature. And that's all I got. Okay, sorry, I closed there. Anybody else have any reports? Okay, next I have the finance report. Jan?
Yeah, I have two items tonight. I'm passing out, this is informational. As part of our first student contract, we were to implement the parent app, and that was rolled out about three weeks ago. I spoke to Josh this morning to get the numbers. We have 185 parents that have signed up, which is a bit low because our goal is to have every parent. We're working on this summer how we can make that happen to ensure that every parent signs up for the app on their phone. It's a good communication tool, so we'd like to be able to use that for if there's a bus issue or whatever. What I handed out or what I'm passing around is just a bullet point list of what the first student, what the parent app can do. And as you can see, I'm not going to go through all the list, but it really is a good communication tool for parents to be able to track the bus, or if there's an issue with the bus, a breakdown or whatever it might be. So we're going to be working to try to figure out how we can get the word out even better and get parents signed up. So that's on the agenda. The second thing I wanted to talk about on the, one of our action items tonight is the renewal of the Demberg contract. So I took a look today, just because I always like to look at these numbers, and it was interesting. I thought I would let you know since we outsourced, I went back to 2012, fiscal year 2012, when we were in-house. And at that time, our maintenance budget for salaries, benefits, and contracted personnel was just under 1.5 million. So I went through every year and looked at the savings, and some of, most of the savings was custodial, but we did, we had a full-time director at one point. Now we have a contracted director, so that was the savings. Anyway, bottom line, we've saved, including this year's budget, I don't have actuals, but about $3.3 million. So that one decision, Matt and I talk a lot about the cumulative effect of decisions, and that one decision has saved us $3.3 million. So I should say that one, it was, like I said, mostly the custodial, but there was the director, but that's that part of the personnel part of that budget. So I just wanted to let you know that. The contract side is two years, we talked about that last week, and we're down, we've been decreasing the custodians all along. We're going to reduce one more next year. And so the impact of the increase is not going to be as much because we're reducing one. So, anyway, thank you for doing that. We talked about it last week, I know we're voting tonight, but John Allen from Demberg said this is going to be a really big deal to help them, so, yeah, to retain custodians. Yeah, it's retention because surrounding districts and, yeah, everybody's in a fight to keep or get and keep custodians, so thank you.
Anything else? Have I got any questions? Okay, next on the agenda, we have the education report, Dr. Dave.
All right, Dr. Dave, I love it. So tonight, I'm just going to give you a quick review of the internal review. A couple months ago, I mentioned that we were going to be going through our first annual internal review. In essence, building administrators, central office administrators, myself, Dr. Oll, traveled to every building and had the opportunity to visit lots and lots and lots of classrooms. The way it all went down is we went to each building and department, we got to see pre-K as well. Each administrator put on a half-hour presentation for us, talking about their school improvement efforts for this year, major initiatives, look fours, their strengths, and what they perceive to be their opportunities. We then got to go visit classrooms. We saw over 130 classrooms during our observations. After we visited each school, we then came back together, identified themes, patterns, debriefed. Each school got very specific, itemized feedback on strengths and opportunities as we saw them, and then we came up with themes from the district. So what you have in front of you, these are the district themes that emerged from our internal reviews. You get to see our strengths and our opportunities. It's a two-sided document. On one side, you get to see a bunch of numbers, it's very quantitative. We used an instrument known as the ELYT, which is the Effective Learning Environment Observation Tool. It's an instrument that's used by accreditation institutes around the country, around the world. For example, last year, they used it on 300,000 classrooms, 9 million students, so we thought it's a pretty good instrument that we were able to use as well. Administrators went to classrooms and rated one of, rated 27 different indicators and came up with a score of 1 through 4. So it's a scale score of 1 through 4, 4 meaning they saw this idea, this indicator prevalent from beginning to end in their observation, or 1 just means it wasn't observed in that timeline. It could have happened five minutes after, it could have happened five minutes before, but in that timeline, we just didn't see it. And then we were able to use that to come up with our own relative strengths, the things that we saw ourselves excelling in, the things that we want to hold on to and capture and try to duplicate and replicate, and are also able to look at our relative opportunities and say, "Okay, maybe these are areas that we need to shore up and strengthen and provide some professional learnings, professional development, maybe develop some sort of new infrastructure to try to enhance some things." And then on the other side of the document, you can see where those themes have emerged. The administrative team, we've met together since this time, and we're starting to develop now our professional learning plan for next year already. It's one thing to wait until the state gives us all of our data in August to say, "Here's where our students are excelling, what we need to do differently," and at that point, it's way too late to really put your plans in place. So we're able to use this to really start that process now and start to plan what some of our professional learning might look like for next year already, and say, "Here's where we need to fix things." As we're having our budget conversations, we're able to start targeting things very strategically and also aligns with the strategic plan. As we're starting to collect survey information now, evaluation data, we'll start to see our student achievement data, we can really try to align things in a more systemic, systematic way. One of the great things about this is we're able to see things are systemic, if we're seeing pockets of excellence in certain buildings, or if there are strengths and opportunities across buildings. And again, just trying to be really strategic and targeted with what we do and how we do it. The administrators can tell you, it was an amazing learning opportunity for us as well, not just going into the classrooms and debriefing, but literally just walking down the halls with each other, something that we don't ever really get to do, having high school principals with elementary principals, walking down middle school classrooms, talking about things that they just saw in classrooms, and what good teaching looks like in science class versus a math class versus a reading class. It was powerful. All of us going down to pre-K land and getting a new appreciation for those teachers and what they do on a daily basis. It was just, it was an amazing opportunity. Next year, we're going to, we're looking to expand it and bringing in some outside people as well to try to give us a different perspective. And we're going to continue to just try to use this as professional learning for us, bring our group together, strengthen us as a school and as a system. So if you have any questions about it, we have to answer it, but we're moving forward. It was extremely exciting.
Is this the first time we've done this E-Lot?
The ELYT, yes.
Oh, the ELYT, okay, so that's the first time?
It is.
Okay. Anybody else got questions?
What kind of people would you bring in from the outside? What backgrounds?
Yeah, there's a lot of opportunities. We could bring in other administrators from other school systems. One way we could do it to try to find some symbiosis so that they benefit and we benefit. There are schools that might be going through an accreditation cycle, that might just be looking to practice this, and we could bring them in just to see how we do it and show off a little bit and get their perspective. We could bring in Clarkston or Oxford people and try to get their perspective. We could bring in state people as well, more people that actually go in and do these accreditation visits, basically full-time retired educators.
Anybody else, questions? Great job, thanks, Dr. Dave.
Thank you.
One other thing out there, just another information and discussion piece. I guess first I would say this, internal review is a really great thing. Dr. Smith has a lot of experience with doing these reviews in other schools. It was really cool to watch. I was more like a fly on the wall and just with the team and Dave worked with the team, but it is really connecting with everything that we want to do. It is forcing us to get under the hood and really look at ourselves, so it's a really good process, and I think it's really honest with this, so I think it's excellent. The other thing I wanted to point out is Jan and I got some news today about our fall, our winter count. And we're up almost 30 students at winter. And that has not happened, at least in the five years that I've been here. We're always, almost always less from fall to winter. And we are up about 30 FTE, which is fabulous, and it's people that have moved in, so it's giving us a little bit of hope that are stabilizing, maybe even happen faster than we think, but we'll see, but we have a very good winter count this year.
Or are we seeing the increases? Is there specific schools or?
Some different spots, a little bit of high school, it's all over the place.
Okay.
We're waiting for some, a little bit more detail on it.
Oh, great news.
It's really good news.
I have a question.
Yeah?
Yes, ma'am. One of the opportunities is listed as Brandon teachers have the opportunity to more regularly use formative assessment to self-assess and provide timely impactful feedback to students. Will that be alongside of, or I don't want to get into weeds too far, it's just interesting to me, because something that's always on my mind is our need for data, and the way to get data is the standardized test, but yet I have some things with the standardized test. You know, it's this mixture of acknowledging we need the data. Would these be parallel or concentric?
Absolutely, they run parallel, side by side. So this internal review, I could argue, we want to talk about formative versus summative assessment, is a formative assessment, our opportunity to say, "What do we need to do to change course?"
Right.
And one of the themes that emerged is that oftentimes our teachers, and they're pushed to try to get through so much content, get through so many standards, sometimes feel that burden is, "I'm halfway through a lesson, I see that half my kids get it, half my kids don't. Can I differentiate now? Can I deviate? How do I know if they've got it, if they don't have it, or am I supposed to just continue to plow through?"
Right.
So we want to try to make sure our teachers understand that they can pause, they can stop, they can assess the class, and they can deviate if necessary. And it was just one of the themes that emerged as we popped into classrooms, again, in that limited timeframe, 15-minute windows on those given days, that we didn't see it as much as we'd like to. We want to be able, make sure that our teachers understand they have that freedom, that luxury, and it's a responsibility as well.
Right, right. I think there's always a competition for time, right?
Absolutely.
And they're trying to get to what they need to, they feel obligated to get out there to...
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah.
And I wonder if there's less or more stress, because we've had all those days, not here.
Oh, absolutely.
And I think that's a fine line that we're walking. Yeah, we'd love not to have to replace it, but the teachers have to feel that stress to make up. And are you, the visits into the classrooms, you do another time this year, or is this it for the year?
This was it for this through the year. And we do this in a non-evaluative way, we don't list teachers' names. Administrators are still going into classrooms on a daily basis and providing that one-on-one individualized feedback, but in terms of us, one time a year.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, next on our agenda are our action items. Approval of the regular board meeting date changes. Could I have a motion, please?
Move that the Brandon Board of Education approve the regular board meeting date changes from Monday, July 15, 2019, to Monday, July 8, 2019, and Monday, August 19, 2019, to Monday, August 12, 2019, as presented.
Support.
Okay, got a Lisa's support. And John, motion. Okay, any discussion?
So the bond topic that we were having, this aligns our calendar with what we have to do with law. So instead of having extra meetings, let's just line it up.
Shift it until we'll be on time for things, if. Okay.
That's how we go.
Yes.
And the other if, that's how you go.
Yes.
So we're in position if.
Right, just so it's out there that it's an if, not that I'm opposed.
No, I'm with you 100%.
Just saying.
Yes. Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor say yes. Yes, opposed say no. Okay, could I get a motion for approval of the Brandon High School freshman STEM class overnight trip?
Move that the Brandon Board of Education approve the high school freshman STEM classes overnight trip to Grand Rapids, Michigan, April 15 and 16, 2019, for the MDOT Track State of Michigan Branch Competition.
Support.
By Lisa.
It's a theme.
Yes. Lisa's always been supportive of us.
Be a supportive person.
Yes. Okay, any discussion? We saw their pictures, and I know last year we had a great outcome, so hopefully it'll continue. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Any opposed say no. Motion passes. Could I get a motion for the approval of the high school student council overnight trip?
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve the student council overnight trip to the MASCMAHs Student Leadership State Conference, Grand Rapids, Michigan, March 23 through the 25, 2019, as presented.
Support. Okay, support by John. Okay, any discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor say yes. Yes, opposed say no. Motion passes. Okay, could I get a motion for the approval of employment construction trades instructor?
Move that the Board of Education approve to hire Eric Swanson as the construction trades instructor for the 2018-19 school year as presented.
Support.
Support by Mary Ann. Okay, any other discussion?
Just one thing on this is that he mentioned that he's going to be starting on April 8. Our middle school, he's a counselor currently. Our middle school counselor is having, is going to be out for a leave and for most of the rest of the year, so Eric is actually going to be coming on to fill the role of counselor, which we would have had to hire somebody else. So he's going to do part-time where he's going to do that, part-time getting this initiative launched, which is a massive undertaking that he's going to be doing. So we're excited to be able to get him on board early.
What do we have in terms of tools and equipment and all that stuff? Do we have stuff?
We actually have incredible career technical equipment. We have a really nice wood shop that needs to be renovated a little bit because the robotics, it's not renovation like that, like we have to move tables back into position, and we need to get stuff out of there, but we have all the equipment that we need. We also have an incredible machining shop, which we'll talk about that probably for 2021, doing, we have these welding bays, we really want that to happen, and we're working with Clarkston and Holly on some ideas to try to launch that. But we're ready to go. We have great facilities, we just have not had the right person to take that program. Excited about Eric.
Exciting, very exciting. Okay, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed say no. Motion passes, and I know he was here, so congratulations. Could I get a motion for the approval of Brandon legislative priorities?
Move that the Brandon Board of Education approve the Brandon legislative priorities as presented.
Support.
By Lisa.
By Lisa.
Okay, Matthew, this is...
Yeah, just briefly, we've talked about this at a few of our previous meetings, and last Monday, we talked through this a little bit more detail at our workshop. This is us talking about some of the things that legislatively that are important for the Brandon School District. This is going to be, as we were talking about, some advocacy, where we're going to be reaching out and talking with our parents on some things that really matter for Brandon. We do need some legislative changes, there's some things that could really help Brandon and districts like ours. Four priority areas, funding is a big part of it, reducing testing and testing assessments curriculum, looking at things like the ACT work keys elimination, which is a bill sponsored by our local representative. We're looking at potentially changed M-step, again, we want to reduce the burden, to have meaningful testing for students but not overwhelming, to take a look at the Common Core Math